Good morning, everyone. We will go ahead and get started. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is located outside on the table and also on our website. There's also an automatic external defibrillator that's available on the back wall of the legislative chambers. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation after God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin with the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Here.
Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia.
Commissioner Morgan.
Commissioner Rogers.
Here.
Madam Chair.
Present. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, April 26, 2022. And item B, call for a meeting and set Tuesday, May 17, 2022, as a date for hearing of certified assessment corrections reflecting the admission, addition of omitted property to tax rolls or increased value on property. Is there a motion to approve A and B? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber or on Zoom wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we have two resolutions, D and E. We have no need for executive session. So do I have a motion to approve D and E and adjourn? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
We'll move to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh. Uh, Commissioner Friend.
What's the question?
Roll call.
Here.
All right. Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Morgan.
Present.
Commissioner Rogers. Madam Chair.
Present. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, April 26, 2022. And item B, approval of claims submitted for payment processor Tuesday, May 10, 2022. Is there a motion to approve A and B? Motion by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Rogers. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Next is the consent agenda, items A through I. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Next, we'll move to recognition and proclamations. The first is the approval of a resolution proclaiming May 6, 2022, as Child Care Provider Appreciation Day in Douglas County. Commissioner Maureen Boyle.
This is just a statement to, of course, the pressure that our childcare providers have been under, not just during COVID, but really for everything they do for us, though. So, May 6 is going to be declared Child Care Providers' Day, so I just wanted to proclaim this resolution. Whereas childcare aware, whereas childcare aware of America and other organizations nationwide are recognizing childcare providers on May 6, 2022, and whereas over half of children under the age of six in America are estimated to spend some time in non-parental care arrangement on a weekly basis, which provides critical enrichment opportunities and nurtures development of children of all backgrounds and is a vital building block of our economy. And whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has created tremendous hardship for childcare providers who have continued to meet the needs of families while risking their health and financial stability to remain open. And whereas our future depends on the quality of the early childhood experience, experiences provided to young children and support for high-quality childcare represents a worthy commitment to our children's future. Now, therefore, be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that this Board hereby proclaims May 6, 2022, as Child Care Provider Appreciation Day in Douglas County, and further encourages everyone to recognize childcare providers for their important work.
Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Boyle. Are any other further questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Next is a resolution recognizing May 1 through May 7 as National Correctional Officers Week. And with us today is our Director of Corrections, Mr. Mike Myers, and he'll read the resolution for us.
Good morning, Commissioners. Michael Myers, Director of Corrections for Douglas County. Just real briefly before I read the resolution, I want to thank my staff first and foremost. They face some tremendous challenges every day. One of the things I need to do better at is publicizing the good work that they do. We yesterday recognized several of our staff members for awards for their service throughout 2021. And there were several lives that were saved, literally, I don't know, I mean that in a figurative sense. There were several lives that were saved by the quick actions of our staff, whether these were incidents of somebody attempting to harm themselves or medical emergencies that would have resulted in bad outcomes if our staff hadn't intervened in a professional and immediate manner. And so I want to thank our staff for what they do every day. And they make, they certainly, you know, I, I, no, I'll never say that I have an easy job, but they certainly make my job as easy as it possibly could be when you have a team of dedicated people around you. Whereas correctional officers and employees are trained professionals dedicated to maintaining safe correctional facilities and ensuring public safety. And whereas correctional facilities across the United States, including Douglas County, including the Douglas County Department of Corrections, are run by highly qualified and experienced individuals who supervise, teach, train, mentor, counsel, and treat thousands of incarcerated individuals. And whereas Douglas County recognizes the exceptional challenges all correctional officers and staff face while conducting their duties on a daily basis. And whereas the officers and staff of the Douglas County Department of Corrections routinely perform acts of heroism and have saved the lives of numerous individuals with little notoriety. And whereas the officers and staff of the Douglas County Department of Corrections continually make our community safer and improve the well-being of all citizens by helping those who are most in need. And whereas Douglas County is grateful for our correctional officers and staff who willingly risk their own safety in order to protect the safety of others and provide hope while assisting with reentry and life outside of corrections. And whereas on May 5, 1984, President Ronald Reagan signed Proclamation 5187, creating National Correctional Officers Week. Since then, the first full week in May has been marked to recognize and honor the work of correctional officers and correctional personnel worldwide, or excuse me, nationwide. Now, therefore, be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners of Douglas County, Nebraska, that this Board hereby declares May 1 through the 7, 2022, as National Correctional Officers Week in Douglas County. So we may recognize the employees for their service, leadership, and exceptional performance of their duties under the most difficult of circumstances dated this third day, third day of May, 2022. Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to acknowledge what we do publicly today.
Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Again, thanks for being here and reading that for us. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Next is a resolution recognizing the invaluable role Douglas County 911 operators and dispatchers have in the safety of our community. And I would ask that those employees come forward as I read the resolution. If, yep. And if you could just introduce yourselves as, before we start.
My name is Kevin Gibbs. I am a 911 dispatcher. I've been at Douglas County 911 for three years.
My name's Haley Lovely, and I am an operator at Douglas County 911, and I have been there for four years.
Thank you for being with us. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time of day or night that may require police, fire, or emergency medical services. And whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our first responders is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Douglas County 911 Emergency Communications Department. And whereas the week of April 10 through April 16, 2022, had been declared National Public Safety Telecommunications Week with the intent to promote 911 awareness and to recognize the invaluable role the operators and dispatchers have in the safety of our communities. And whereas the individuals staffing our 911 center are the first and most critical contact our citizens have when an emergency occurs. Whereas Douglas County 911 Emergency Communications Department dispatches for 15 regional agencies and receives over 500,000 calls each year, 24 hours per day, 365 days per year. And whereas our dispatchers and operators have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fire, and treatment of patients, while continuing to exhibit compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their jobs. Now, therefore, be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that this Board hereby recognizes the invaluable dedication of Douglas County 911 operators and dispatchers and celebrate National Public Safety Telecommuters Week in honor and of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our community safe, dated this third day of May, 2022. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Friend, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Friend.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You two, this is, when, years ago, when I, when I started my first job, I, I, even up to this point, I've never really had a job that on a daily basis would affect so many people in, with so wide a range. I mean, I, I worked at, I worked at a newspaper, and if I made a mistake, I had an editor say, "You made a mistake", and it didn't hurt anyone, usually. When, when you guys in corrections and law enforcement and healthcare providers, when they make mistakes, they ripple, and they affect people in a, in a very significant way. So not only can I not comprehend that, I can only tell you thanks, because to me, I've never been in, in, in that type of environment. I, I can't tell you what it's like. I can only tell you that you're probably not paid enough. We'll do whatever we can in that regard, but, but I can, I can only tell you thank you. And, and to me, the, the more I do this particular job, the more I really understand, thanks to you guys and others, about what type of critical, you know, job that you do and how many people it does affect. So I'll try to commit it to memory and do the best I can to, to understand where you're going and, and what you're putting up with on a daily basis. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment? Commissioner Boyle?
Yep. So unlike Commissioner Friend, I, I do walk into environments like that sometimes at my work, and I know what it's like when you get into work and you just kind of feel that aura, that energy. It's like, oh, no, it's gonna be one of those days. I know you know what I'm talking about. Yeah, yeah. So I just want to say, I, I do empathize. I know exactly what you go through. It's like, you're walking into the fire every day, and it, it's never boring, and that's kind of the energy sometimes that you feed off of. It's very important to have the support of your colleagues. It's probably the most important thing, is to have good teamwork. So I know that having, you know, you both here is a good thing. You do a good job of supporting each other. I think it's also important to recognize that really you're dealing with people in their most vulnerable, in their most fragile states. And so to be able to do that with, with not just compassion, but with, with intelligence and the ability to think quickly about what, what the best course of action is going to be, that's really hard to do, and it takes very special people to be able to do that. You're, you're basically kind of the, the glue that holds the community together when it comes to keeping us safe. So I, I just wanted to express my gratefulness, my thankfulness for everything that you do.
Anyone else wishing to comment? I do, I do want to apologize that this is late. I will take full responsibility that I didn't get this on the agenda in time. But I just felt, even though that week had passed, it was so important to recognize you all. I think you're the silent heroes of our whole process that takes place. And I think you have the least recognition for the absolute most important job that you do, and we wanted to make sure that you knew that. And again, it's, it's without you, no, there would be total disasters in this community. And so we wanted to make sure that we recognized all of you in our department to make sure you knew that we appreciated you and job well done.
Thank you very much.
So thank you. And if you could just come through and shake our hands?
Thanks. Thank you so much.
And thanks for being here today as well. Next is a recognition. Oh, we did? I'm sorry. I thought we did. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Next is a resolution honoring the life and works of State Senator Rich Pauls upon his recent passing. Whereas State Senator Rich Pauls has passed away at the age of 78 after a brief illness. And whereas Rich Pauls was first elected to the Nebraska Legislature in 2004, where he served two terms. And whereas Rich Pauls was elected to the Omaha City Council in 2013, representing District 5 in southwest Omaha, and was re-elected in 2017. And whereas Rich Pauls left his seat in the legislature in 2021, after he was again elected to the state legislature. Rich Paul, whereas Rich Pauls had also served as a principal in the Millard School District and was the founding member of Aldridge Elementary School. And whereas throughout his career and his different capacities, Rich Pauls was a strong advocate for education and was known for his deep commitment to the public service, his positive demeanor, and his ability to work collaboratively with others to get things done. And whereas Rich Pauls will be sorely missed by the members of this board and by all of those with whom he worked to improve our state and our community. Now, therefore, be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that this Board hereby honors the life and works of State Senator Rich Pauls and further expresses its most sincere condolences to his family and friends upon his recent passing, dated this third day of May, 2022. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Morgan and seconded by Commissioner Friend. Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's been an interesting few weeks. The Madam Chair has been, it's been pretty rough, and this, this is, this is just the epitome of that. I, I served with Rich, I served with Rich for four years in the Nebraska Legislature. Actually, when I moved to Millard, Rich Pauls was a principal. And I always talked to my friends, and they said, "If you actually get called to Rich Paul's office, that's probably not a good thing. You're, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to ante up. You're gonna have to, you know, tell him what the deal was." So there, but, but he was such a calming voice, particularly in the legislature. But here's my story. We, we served on a, a committee together, and Rich was a very, Rich was very even keel, as opposed to me. I was up and down and up and down. And one time I was up, and Rich, I've never, I had never seen this from Rich, then he went up about two decibels. And I go, "I think that's the principal Rich Pauls that I don't want to go see right now," so I just went back down. And, but he, he was a, he was a thoughtful legislator. He, he was a good person, and, and I'll miss him. And Madam Chair, thank you for the time.
Anyone else? Commissioner Morgan?
I would just say, Rich Pauls was just a really good person and served our community well. And it is tough for you as our chairperson with these recent events. Are pretty sad. And we know that from what happened in, Mike Myers gone, but the correction officer that we lost in the accident on 192nd and F Street and so on. So hopefully, we'll see some calmness in this. And I think I put that bumper sticker on my calendar, "Be like Brad." Brad worked with everyone. It didn't matter which side you were on. He was still always respectful and tried to make things work out in a favorable way for all of us. So thank you for that resolution.
And you know, Rich was good in, in such as an elected official, but he was also great as a friend. And he had this quirky sense of humor about him that, that we will definitely miss. So, thank you.
Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
And our last resolution is proclaiming May, 2022, as Mental Health Month in Douglas County. Whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being. And whereas all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives. And whereas prevention is an effective way to reduce the burden of mental health conditions. And whereas there is a strong body of research that supports specific tools that all Americans can use to better handle challenges and protect their health and well-being. And whereas mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation. And whereas with early and effective treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives. And whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen share the burden of mental health problems and has a responsibility to promote mental health wellness and support prevention efforts. Now, therefore, be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that this Board does hereby proclaim May, 2022, as Mental Health Month in Douglas County. Be it further resolved that this Board calls upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools to recommit to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions, dated this third day of May, 2022. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Any comments? I would just say that again, I'm very proud of this Board that we've taken such a high profile of mental illness in our work that we're doing. And, and COVID, you know, as everyone said, just kind of exacerbated the problems in, in all areas. And so this would be a good time, not only just this month, but all year long, to continually keep that conversation at the forefront of our discussions. And, and mostly just continue to be kind, because we never know what people are struggling with. So with that, please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Next, or citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber or on Zoom wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda?
Good morning.
Morning.
I won't read, I won't read that, but it kind of sums up my feelings about the rules, the Open Meetings Act and my experiences here. I have two, maybe three experiences, recent examples, of why I feel the need to force the discussion in these chambers, since I help pay for the building, of the Open Meetings Act as it applies to all the various bodies in Omaha and Douglas County, even the state, the public bodies that have public meetings. The reason is because the people that are elected or appointed maybe don't understand the Act themselves. So we need the county attorney in each county and the Attorney General to come down and explain publicly and then answer questions, both from you and from citizens, two-way, so that there's no misunderstanding about it, who the Act is for, what the intent is. Now, last week, I struck out three times in this building. I helped pay for this building. I was kicked out of this one, kicked out of the city council, and the so-called mini-council meeting. Excuse me. That meeting down there is a prime example of why. Now, we do have a representative, the county attorney, sitting in this room. I have been to that, her. I have been to the county attorney with an email, no answer. I have been to the Attorney General, no answer. So I'm sort of forced to do this, aren't I? Because I don't get any answers from you people. Maybe because your attorneys advise you that you're not to back and forth with people. But if you want to ask a question or ask them to come up, that's fine and dandy. But anyway, the city council has to have a mini-meeting before the city council meeting? For what purpose? Why do they advertise it as an open meeting, right there in print? So I go down there sometimes, if I'm kicked out of here in time, to this 10:30 meeting. The doors are open. There's an open meeting copy over there that they don't refer to. They don't point out, and they don't encourage citizens to come, but they put it in their public notices. That makes it, to me, to any citizen in this county, this city, a public meeting, and they're entitled to go in. Which means, under the Open Meetings Act, that you have a right to ask questions, to speak. But they said, "No, wouldn't let me." And then they sent their little city attorney following me out of the room. "Oh, do we have to have security there for you next week?" I guess they did have a meeting about that, so they probably will have. I might not get there in time today, though, so they won't have any fun, will they? I remember a time when two commissioners used to come down to this podium as citizens, because they are both. And they talked about rules. What rules? There are no rules. Those are not my words. You can go back over the years that I've been coming up here and watch those. They're probably expunged from the record now. But I think some of you have been here a long time, and you'd have to admit that that did occur. And some of you treated them very badly. That's got to stop. They're citizens, and they help pay for this, too. So you need to polish up the rules. This Board has a lot better rules and procedures than any other. I'm gonna give you an example of last night, kicked out once again, at an open meeting, the Omaha Public School Board meeting, which to a certain extent, they gotta go by the rules in Omaha, don't they? And by the city, the county, and by the state. They say it's an open meeting. They have a consent agenda like you do. Most citizens don't understand, they cannot come out, comment on agenda, meeting items unless you pull it out of there for discussion. Then you might... Then you might let us speak on it, or you might not. But at least you, you people do do that. I tried to raise a question after they got through their agenda, and I have a copy of that here, where then they talk about items for action and discussion. Guess what, folks? Citizens that went down to that meeting were not going to be allowed to talk on any of those items, but they were going to vote on them. They were making policy that affects all of us. And they denied it and walked me out with three brutes, three armed brutes in front of everybody. They didn't explain why I was not going to be allowed or why they wouldn't be allowed. They just walked me out. That's got to stop. Citizens, first of all, rights under the Constitution are violated every day in these chambers and those chambers. Please give them some guidance here and invite the county attorney's representatives to enforce the act here every, every day. They do not do so that I know of.
Thank you, Larry.
But invite a meeting of attorney and the Attorney General right here.
Thank, Larry, your time's up. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Larry. Thank you, Larry. Next, we will move, we will move, Larry, we will move to committee discussions. But thank you, the first being our finance, the budget report as presented, unless there's questions or comments. Next is an ARPA funding, the approval of a resolution authorizing the award of $30,000 to the Intercultural Senior Center to provide funding for the Mental Healthcare Coordination of Older Adults Initiative, which will provide mental health care to the immigrants over 50 years of age. And I believe this is brought to us and then out of the investment dollars of Commissioner Morgan's, ARPA funding. Is there a motion to approve? Commissioner Morgan?
Was going to second it, but if you haven't visited this facility and what they do, I happen to be there. It's not in my district, but I was told about it. And Mr. Garcia, Commissioner Garcia, mentioned it to me and I decided to go by on my own and see what it was like. And I just have a great respect for what they're doing. And I think is per that resolution on mental health, you know, we just need to really work at that in all areas. And they're doing a fine job there with our citizens, especially our senior citizens.
Thank you. Anyone else? There was a motion and a second. The second was Commissioner Rogers, but did you make the motion? Commissioner?
No, I think Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Commissioner, oh, you seconded it? Who made the motion?
Madam Chair, I had Commissioner Rogers with the motion.
Oh, with the motion, okay. Thank you. All right, please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Next, we'll move to the Health and Human Services. There's a resolution approving an MOU with the Nebraska Department of Veterans Affairs or the, on the Douglas County Veteran Service Office to continue to use the Vetra SPAC system to process benefit claims for veterans and their dependents. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Kavanaugh, second by Commissioner Rogers. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Just real quick, I would offer an amendment to this. Down in the resolved paragraph, the copy that before us says, and the Nebraska Department of Affairs, which I don't think actually exists, but this should be the Nebraska Department of Veterans Affairs. And I would offer that amendment to this resolution.
All right. Any further questions or comments? All right. Please vote.
I'm sorry.
On the amendment?
Oh, yeah, I was just taking it as a friendly amendment to the.
Procedurally?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, so this is voting on the item as amended?
Yeah, sorry. I just took it as a friendly.
If I could, just on that, I want to also recognize John Hilgert, the Director of the Nebraska Department of Veterans Affairs, for the excellent job that he and his staff do in helping us secure benefits for our veterans and their dependents. I think John, who served in the legislature before going to the department, may be the longest-serving Veterans Affairs Director, at least in recent history, but possibly in the history of the state. And he does a great job. So kudos, John.
Yep, I agree.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thanks for being here. With that, we will move to Human Resources, the Weekly Personnel Report from Civil Service as presented, unless there's questions or comments. And then item two, legislative issues. And today we have our lobbyists, Mr. Sean Kelly and Ms. Julia Pluckert here to give us our year-end report. So I would welcome them to the podium. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Pleased to report the 107th Legislature's Second Session is adjourned. They adjourned signing die on April 20th. Of course, it was a short session, but it felt much longer than a short session this year. We, Julie and I have talked about that ad nauseam. We really attribute it to probably the ARPA funds. So essentially doing to another budget in the second year created, made for some long nights and, and the session felt like it, it stretched out a little further. But in total, this session, there were 593 legislative bills introduced. For the biennium, there were 1,277 bills introduced. So quite the volume of piece of legislation for us to review. This session, 106 priority bills, as is the usual number, 69 passed, 12 failed due to filibuster, 24 failed due to lack of time or failed to advance from committee, and one bill was vetoed and, and not overridden. I would say four, there are four items of legislation this year that were specifically noteworthy, more generally and, and certainly impacts Douglas County in some respect. First would be the ARPA allocation, which was $1.04 billion that went out to different entities across the state. Secondly, which ties into that item, would be the LB 1024, the Economic Recovery Act with a special emphasis on North and South Omaha that Senator Wayne and McKinney are, are spearheading. Third would be LB 873, which was a tax package the legislature passed, which included phasing out Social Security tax sooner, dropping down the top individual and corporate rate to 5.84, and then providing a new property tax credit in the form of community college payments made. And then last would be the water legislation, continued funding for a potential recreational lake between Omaha and Lincoln and the Perkins Canal Project, which is in southwest Nebraska. So of those two items, $153 million was allocated for that. In, in typical legislative sessions, that's unheard of, but that wasn't even the highest appropriation item this session. So quite the times we are living in with this legislative session. Which moves me to Douglas County's priorities. This board took eight positions on pieces of legislation. Pleased to report six of those items were, had a favorable result, those passed, and two of them were unfavorable. Of those six, five dealt with, with dollars. So different and more funding streams for particular items that Douglas County was, was supporting. Highlighting the issue that was most unfavorable, that was the reduction of inheritance tax that counties will receive, increasing the exemption amount and lowering some of the rates. So we anticipated this would be an issue for this session as that bill advanced from committee in 2021. And sure enough, it was. It was prioritized on day two and debated on day four of this legislative session. So we worked with our counterparts at Naco, Lancaster County to ensure that that compromise that came out of the Revenue Committee was the final compromise that, that did pass. Fortunately, in our view, that was the case as there was an effort to absolutely phase out the inheritance tax. Highlighting the items that were favorable to Douglas County, first was the bill that we had introduced at your request through Senator McDonnell, and that would be changing the Open Meetings Act to include virtual meetings where non-action items are taken. So Teresa, Diana, Marcus, and I have worked on that legislation back in November. And I didn't think I'd be standing here today to say that that bill passed, but sometimes timing is everything. And so that bill is now law, thanks to Senator McDonnell for introducing that piece of legislation and, and working it through the system. Next was a bill that also I didn't think at the time of the legislative hearing, which was the very last day of the Judiciary Committee hearings, LB 1223, which dealt with restoring competency for those in, specifically county jails, who've been staying for quite too long, upwards of 100 days in some insist, waiting to get their competency restored to stand trial. We, we worked on that legislation with Senator Matt Hanson. It ultimately was amended into LB 921, which ironically was a piece of legislation that Douglas County opposed because it would have filled up our county jail with certain felony convictions. So that ended up being a vehicle that, that we supported when those items were stripped out. And essentially, the Department of Health and Human Services will be paying counties that are over 100,000 people $100 per day over 30 days for those defendants who are waiting to get their competency restored. In addition, that bill provides for a special committee of the legislature to look at this progress and process with the state and local governments to make sure that these individuals are getting their competency restored at a much sooner rate. Lastly, Medicaid-certified nursing facilities will be receiving $47.5 million over the course of the next three years, specifically for retention and recruitment of employees. And again, that stretches out over three years. So as always, we're looking ahead to the future to see what next year will bring. The 2023 legislature will be much different than, than this legislative session, mainly because of term limits. 11 state senators are term limited, two are not seeking reelection, and then four sitting senators are running for a different office. So if you think two of those would maybe be successful in their bids, then we'll have at least 15 new state senators in the 2023 session, and that would be if all incumbents won. So a lot of turnover again, and it'll be a lot of leadership turnover with committee chairs and, and perhaps the speaker as well. So that concludes our remarks on the session. I would, lastly, just add, Julie and I, and certainly Mike Kelly are really sad about Rich Pauls and Brad Ashford, of course. Those were two senators that were really friends of Douglas County. And Rich, last couple of years, he would be one of the first guys we'd go to on Douglas County issues. So he was great to work with and he'll be missed.
Thanks for, Commissioner Morgan?
Want to thank you and Julie for the good work you do. And I've told you that privately. Really appreciate your professionalism and the manner that you receive down there and the respect that you both have from the state senators and have talked to some of them. And that's really a tribute to the work you do. And I thank you for the good work that you do on behalf of Douglas County and for the state of Nebraska. So thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Sean, thank you and Julie for the great representation that you give. I know it was a tough session and it's not always easy to bring home the bacon on sessions like this, but I think that we can be gratified that your efforts bore some fruit and we will hopefully going forward realize some of those income streams that you were able to bring back to Douglas County. So thank you.
Thank you.
I too want to thank you and a lot of times, thank you for talking me down when Sean, Sean would call and tell me what the, what was going on or updates or here's what we need to look for. And, and he would say, but okay, just wait, breathe before you answer. I get a little excited.
Yeah, lead off with those conversations, are you sitting down or where are you?
Where are you? But you, you guys do a fantastic job. And so thank you very much for the work that you do for us.
Thank you.
And talking. Bite down. He would get excited.
Exactly. That's right. Yeah. You know, you're pretty good at that.
Yep. Well, thank you for being here and thank you for what you do for Douglas County.
Yep, thank you.
With that, I'm sorry, yes?
There is door 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha 68132. I want to thank those people also. I'm sure it's not a very easy job. But would it be possible to get a follow-up report on how that benefits the citizen like me, either through them or through you? How it translates into representing us at the state legislature? That's what your job is. So would like some of that. And also I'd like to know if they get more than five minutes when they go down there to lobby, they get paid to do that. I don't. And I might get five minutes, I might not. They might even let us speak. But, you know, it's basically for the citizens. So can we have the interpretation of their work as to how it turns into the benefit for the citizens you represent? Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, we will, we do have need for an executive session for legal advice, union negotiations, litigation. And before we do go into executive session, I would ask that our folks from 911 come down because we'll get a picture with our resolution before you leave and before we go into executive session. But with that, do we have a motion to go into executive session for the reasons stated? Motion by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Rogers. Please vote. And then also, we do have a Community Service Committee meeting at 2 o'clock today in Room 903. That's Commissioner Maureen Boiles' committee.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Diane, we appoint her as the attorney of Mr. Christian.
I'm honored, but she doesn't like that idea.
That's a good idea.
You sent in my motion to re-convince and adjourn the seconded white motion by Morgan, seconded by Boyle. All voters say aye.
Okay, that works for me.
Yeah, that works for me. And goodbye.
Okay. See you later.
All right.
All right.
Diane, we have point heard that I'm very interested.
(laughing)
I'm honored, but she doesn't like that idea.
(laughing)
Do you second my motion to reconvene in adjourned? All fingers say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that works for me.
Yeah, aye, it works for me. And goodbye.
Okay, see you later. Do you want to be a guest? I'm still here.
I'm impressed.
Okay, great.
You're still here. I'll see you later.
Yes, you will. I mean, I sure hope so, at least.
You will. I think.
(laughing)
You hit my boss this afternoon. Me.
(laughing) Let's keep it vague.
I know.